Okay, I've got six o'clock. We're going to open the February 19th meeting of the Isla Meadow Planning Board. First, we went to Mass General Law. We're recording this meeting for LCAT and also taping the meeting for our minutes. And is anyone else here recording the meeting? Please identify yourself and your organization. Hearing none, we'll proceed. We have here tonight John Torscha, Russ Denver, Ty Richards, and myself, George Kingston. Lumora Vito is absent. We have not gotten advance notice of the minutes, so we're going to hold off on the minutes until our next meeting. Just to make an announcement at the beginning, in case people leave, on the agenda it says the next scheduled meeting is March 19th. That is incorrect. The next meeting is March 5th. However, it will be a working meeting, basically a workshop with the board. We will be dealing with as little as possible in the way of hearings at that point. So, just to let you know, that was a misprint. Okay, first public hearing we have. Ty, do you want to read?
Yep. Case SP 2019-02 Pride Convenience Store, request by applicant for special permit amendment for a change in hours of operation at 13 North Main Street. Assessor's parcel ID 27-37-0 and 27-38-0. Combined 16,682 plus or minus square foot site located in the business zoning district. Applicant Pride Convenience Inc., Attorney James Channing, 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass.
Evening.
Attorney James Channing for the record, representing the applicant Pride Convenience Inc. As a way of a background, there's a special permit. This is 13 North Main Street, the mobile station in the rotary center of town. The current hours of allowed operation are 5:00 AM until 10:00 PM, seven days a week. The request by Pride to extend those until 5:00 AM until 11:30 PM, seven days a week, so it's a 90-minute extension. Just for the record, we've certainly been before the board previously, discussed our request. Initially, we requested an additional amount beyond the 11:30 PM, but in lieu of all the facts, all the information, we feel that we may be in a position to come before the board again, ask for a reduction in our previous request, meaning reduce from initially we asked for 1:00 AM. We're now in a position to ask for 11:30 PM. In our supplemental, we actually proposed several conditions to be added to the special permit, which in our opinion would address some of the concerns previously expressed, including a restriction or a limitation as to when dumpsters may be picked up to ensure that there's no additional lighting spillover and any of the abutting parcels, as well as... forgive me for a second. Obviously, the restriction is to noise, and if there are any complaints about the extension, again, the planning board itself could reserve the right to revisit the specific issue to alter the decision. And again, when it's not operating, the exterior light shall be reduced only what's necessary for security purposes. The lighting plan itself, there's four lights around the perimeter of the property. They actually do shut off on themselves now, but that would just be... I mean, they're lower, they're shielded, there's no spillover as it exists now. We're in a position to believe that, again, in comparison to other hours of operation which are permitted in the general vicinity, we feel that 11:30 is actually less than some of those and may be appropriate, given all the considerations that the town and the planning board have to consider, if looking at a request for such as this self or extension of hours permitted.
So, my understanding is you're asking for 11:30, and you're asking that we add these conditions, the dumpster not being emptied prior to 7:00 AM, all exterior lighting screened, lighting is turned down when the place is closed, and if there are any complaints, we reserve the right to revisit the specific issue going forward. As being a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishes to speak? I guess you all heard, we're talking 11:30 as a closing time.
Thank you. For the record, Dawn Starks, 28 Elm Street. Dear members of the planning board...
Push the microphone down so...
Going cross-eyed looking.
Yes.
Once again, the neighbors of the Pride Station located on 13 North Main Street stand before you, asking that Pride's request to extend their hours of operation through the amendment of their special permit be denied for the following reasons. First, they are currently breaking their special permit. Current hours of operations, as stated on a special permit, are 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The store has been, for many months, operating in violation of the permit and staying open past 10:00 PM. I have two receipts of proof, one from August of 2018 and one from as recently as last night, and I will submit those. This alone should be cause for denial. In actuality, it is grounds for revocation of the special permit. Second, on their application, they state that there are no residential abutters. They're being quite technical about that. If you consider the fact that they are using the abutting property of 21 through 23 North Main Street, which they own, to conduct the business of 13 North Main Street, they do have residential abutters. They now have their dumpster for 13 North Main Street on 21 through 23 North Main Street, the same dumpsters that we have complained about in regards to the noise of dumping before dawn. Regardless, the convenience store is within 300 feet of residences and their interests, as indicated by the state statute, should be considered. An extension of hours will extend the length of time the neighborhood has to put up with noise and traffic. Third, reflection of the neighborhood's character. The hours Pride are requesting are not in keeping with the residential neighborhood, which would like some peace and quiet, but is also incongruent with the business neighborhood. Businesses around the neighborhood have the following hours. Maureen's Sweet Shop, 6:00 PM. The Local 98, 5:00 PM. The Seal's Optometry, 4:00 PM. Rocky's, 8:00 PM. Starbucks, 10:00 PM. United Bank, 6:00 PM. Town Hall, 4:00 PM. And Bentley's, I had a little question, I didn't have access to their special permit. Their website states 12:00 AM. I'll be discussing that later. All but one have early closing hours and do not open at 5:00 AM or earlier, with the exception of Starbucks, I believe. Pride's extended hours do not fit in. Fourth, in regards to Bentley's, staying open until, I believe, 12:00 AM. I live directly behind them. Their property on the Elm side and the side between them and 21 and through 23 North Main Street are buffered by woods. In the summer, we cannot see them at all. This mitigates light and sounds, and even in winter to a large degree. They have immediate... They have been immediate and responsive with any sound issues we've had. Pride has no buffers at all. Light and sound travels. I also have an overhead GPS shot showing you Bentley's with all the trees around, so you can see that. I pulled that off the town website. And fifth, competition. Pride is currently open 17 hours a day, this is on 13 North Main Street, and falls well within the scope of hours between 15 to 24 hours a day that is allowed for convenience stores in Isla Meadow. The claim that Pride needs to stay open to keep up with the competition is a false one. Pride, when expanding the scope to include all Pride locations in town, has better hours and more access than any other convenience store. It has a full 24 hours a day available to shift workers and the like, less than two miles down the road from 13 North Main Street. As we know, they are now open 24 hours down on the line, and they are within town limits on that. If a shift worker needs coffee or whatever, they have access to a Pride store. There is no need for an expansion of hours. They do not need more hours to beat or meet the competition. They are the competition. To be honest, Pride has proven not to be honorable in its dealings with the town. It has with intention repeatedly violated our town bylaws and permitting. Suing in violation of permits is their modus operandi. Rewarding them for this behavior would be a breach of trust between the town and its residents. We want good neighbors, whether they be residents, businesses, or industries. Please stand up and insist on a good neighbor policy and deny this amendment for the extension of hours. Thank you, Dawn Starks.
Do you want to submit some documents? You want to submit some documents?
Sure, I will submit the marked-up letter I just wrote. A picture showing the dumpsters on 21 through 23 North Main, a picture showing Bentley's with their trees, and the two invoices that document being open until after 10:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Please.
Hi, good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. Basically, everything that Dawn just said, that's some of what I was going to talk about. I just want to emphasize the fact that if indeed this operation has been in violation of their existing special permit, to move forward and vote for something that they're requesting this evening, in light of the fact that we have knowledge that they have been in violation of their permit, it is a slap in the face to other permit holders in town who honor the conditions that have been set forth in their permits. Special permit is an amazing tool that the town has, that the planning board has, when dealing with different uses in our town. This particular use is under special permit because the combination of gas station and convenience store has a potential for nuisance issues, and I think that it's important that the special permit be honored and that this request be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the issue?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. As you know, a special permit is an agreement between a business holder and the town. It's obvious, I've personally been in the store to make sure that they were open past the 10:00 PM. Simple candy bar purchase, soda and stuff like that, and I did it on multiple occasions. They are in violation existing now. I do not believe that the town should reward them for being in violation. It's one of those, it just doesn't seem to make sense that they seem to be turning their nose up at the town and saying, "Well, we're going to stay open when we want, how we want, and, well, hey, now maybe we'll come in and ask for different hours." I would hope that the board would consider this and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to the subject? Please.
All right, John Barrows, 149 Elm Street. This is the first I'm hearing about this, I don't really have anything prepared, but just personal experience. I've worked in town at a couple of the restaurants, so a lot of times you get out of there late, there's nothing really close by. If you want to grab a cup of coffee, something to eat, grab a gallon of milk, so you don't have to wake up early in the morning before the kids wake up, something like that, it's convenient. I think it'd be helpful just to have it open later. And yeah, maybe they might have been open late a couple times, then, you know, later than they should have been, but I think it would just be convenient, help out some of the people in town. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this? Sir?
Andrew Wilson, 22-24 Elm Street. I talked to one of the people across the street from where I live. Before I came over here, her husband was very stricken, and she says to tell you that her husband and the noise gets her awake and them awake, and she has to have workers and everything else in for him, but she had the bright lights, you have the noise, and from the trash dumpsters, from the cars, and from my place, I live right next to Remito's, where they used to be, and the bright lights shine right straight into the hall. You don't need lights at night. It's just an ongoing thing. It's just the kids from their high schools come by there and they got trouble getting foot down the sidewalk. The last week or so, they've been very diligent in making sure they clean out the end of the sidewalks, but that's only happened in the last week. I don't see any necessary need. People need coffee, candy bars, whatever it is, I mean, get them ahead of time, you know? Let people enjoy their homes, who pay the taxes, who've been there and their property is up in there since 1890. I mean, money is not the only thing. It's people who built this town, worked in this town, paid the taxes in this town. We're not in it for the $10, $90. We're here as a family, to make a community, and that's all we should have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to add anything? Hearing none, I'll take it back to the board. John, any questions or comments at this point?
No, I mean, I just think, you know, when it comes to, you know, it was mentioned earlier, this is an agreement between a business and a town, and, you know, there were obviously a lot of issues that were raised, but the one that stuck out to me the most was the fact that, and I am being, you know, I've been there before, past 10:00 AM and bought things in the past, so the fact that, or 10:00 PM I should say, so the fact that that's being violated is, like somebody said, kind of a slap in the face. And, you know, that should be something that perhaps disqualifies it regardless of all the other issues. So, I'm disappointed that that's the case.
Russ?
I think that was damning, showing two receipts. One was 10:27, one was 10:54. So, 10:54 is not a mistake, that's on purpose kind of thing. We've heard from the neighbors that they believe the character of the neighborhood would be impacted, but what I found fascinating was Ms. Starks also taking it to the business neighborhood, and only one other neighbor, being Bentley's, exceeds, I think it was 8:00.
Exceeds 10.
Exceeds 10. So, that would be, yeah, exceeds 10. So, there's a character of the business district as well that should be taken into consideration. And so, if I just kind of do a quick look around, there's about 20 businesses in the rotary, there's one that exceeds 10:00. 5% certainly is not a large number, and I don't, you know, see a need to expand beyond that as well. We have continued to hear in your application, your narrative, under the conditions, you put screened or angled, so I think a screen would be much better, but you don't write down who has the choice, screen or angle down, which is frustrating as well. But overall, I think between the noise, the character of the neighborhood, the concerns that the neighbor mentioned about the lighting remains, and I found it fascinating that it was mentioned that there's five gas stations in town, three of which are Pride's, and Pride actually has a 24-hour service now, and no other convenience store, gas station in town has 24 hours. So, it's almost like you're competing against yourself. So, I don't buy that argument that's put in there. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Can I say something? Yeah. You know, this has been before us for a long time, and so we've all spent a lot of time thinking about this, and, you know, the thing that really bothers me, there's probably a lot of things that bother me, and I really want to try to work with people, particularly business owners, that's been the nature of my career, business, retail, but I just can't believe for how long we've been talking about this, and you're still open beyond 10:00. I mean, this is yesterday at 10:53. No, correction, it's a 10:10, 10:11. 22 is 10:00, 10 is 10 minutes, and 53 is seconds. Oh, okay, so what is it? 10:11, basically. 10 minutes after 11? Yeah. No, 11 minutes after 10. 11 minutes after 10. Yeah. Okay, well, all right. And the other one is... Yeah, August. But just the same, you think this is such a sensitive issue for so long that you want to make sure you're closed every day at 10:00 sharp, because this is an issue that's being discussed and being considered. And it just seems like it's just so cavalier, like, ah, whatever, you know, now, maybe someday we'll want to expand our gas stations, let's try to get as many of these issues off the table now instead of in the future. And I think closing beyond 10:00, when this is such a big issue before the town, is crazy. Thank you. Man, I'm disappointed that we do have a zoning enforcement person in town, and that if this has been an ongoing complaint, I haven't heard that he has been informed to try to enforce the special permit, and that's a bit of a disappointment, but I hear what I'm hearing from a number of different people, and I understand that we should be in compliance with the current special permit before we talk about expanding it, okay? That's what I'm hearing. I also know that we have had discussions with town attorney regarding this site and regarding litigation that is currently in the courts regarding this site. And I've heard a number of people here express the comments that they don't think the town should cave just simply because somebody has decided to sue us. On the other hand, we're cognizant of the fact that every suit costs the town a lot of money, and that we need to be cognizant of what is worth fighting for and where we need to choose our battles. That's my personal opinion. Do you wish to address any of the issues, attorney?
Please. Again, I can tell you the first brought to my attention, obviously, today, a copy of the receipts. I'd like a copy of those, and I'll obviously look into them.
Your public document now.
If anyone requests or obviously brings attention, whether it be from the town, today, that's the first I hear of it. So, that being said, I would like to briefly address just the hours of operation. I think Mrs. Starks respectfully was certainly selective when she represented the hours with respect to the town. I mean, if you look at Bentley's, their ability to open until 1:00 AM. If you look at Farmington Bank, just to the north of them, they're 24 hours ATM. If you look across the street at Webster Bank, they're 24-hour ATM. You go to Center Square Grill, that's a 1:00 AM. If you go to the Legion and the Knights of Columbus, those are 2:00 AMs. Donardo, you talk about 1:00 AM. The ability to be 1:00 AM. Mario's, 1:00 AM. Pizza Shop, 1:00 AM. Fazio's, 1:00 AM. Pizza Shop's actually 2:00 AM. Fazio's, 1:00 AM. The Shell down the road, 1:00 AM. I think there's a lot more than beyond 11:30 PM in terms of businesses. Sure, some of them may choose to close earlier, that doesn't mean that they all do. The Red Box at Walgreens, 24 hours. I mean, there's a lot of, in fact, the Key Bank on the other side of the rotary, 24 hours ATM. So, there's a lot of hours that exist beyond the 11:30 PM in the business district, in the rotary, if you will. So, I think just to say that some of them, I mean, a sweet shop might close at 8:00 PM, sure, but obviously the bars, the restaurants, you know, the retail areas certainly extend it beyond 11:30 PM. In terms of the angling and whether it be screened or angled lightings, I took that verbatim from language that the planning boards previously used. If there's a preference as to have one light shielded or the other, we'd certainly be inclined to do that. But I think I'm just amiss to not be able to properly address the hours beyond 10:00 not knowing exactly the specifics of them, not having the receipts or the information. I think we did hear from one individual that it may be beneficial to the town. I can tell you the noise complaints, there's obviously, the town has their own ways to address that, whether it be the dumpster, again, we're trying to address that issue as well. But again, not having complaints before tonight to be brought before you, I think's a little unfortunate. Obviously, I think of Pride, we're in a position to have issues, concerns brought to our attention. I don't think, we certainly would just scoff at that. I think we'd be in a position to address it, we have previously, we would be straightforward. I think Mr. Bolduc, in fact, previously gave his cellphone and his personal home phone number. So, if there's any issues by any neighbors at any point in time, contact us. We're a local business, we're here, we care about the town, we're invested in the town, and want to continue in the town. And so, for other individuals, I think to try and portray it differently is just unfortunate. It's not accurate, in my opinion, with respect to both, as a resident of Isla Meadow, but also as obviously corporate counsel for Pride. I'm in a position to think that 11:30 PM would be appropriate. Obviously, as you're well aware, if there's any violation of any condition in the past and the present and the future, you have the right to revoke the special permit. You still have that today, and hopefully you will have that in the future, regardless of your decision tonight.
Thank you. Anyone wish to introduce any additional testimony at this point, or data, or information?
Can I just point out the obvious?
Yeah.
Donardo's, pizza shop, et cetera, et cetera, restaurants. This is a gas station convenience store. ATM, you drive up to it. Convenience store, you walk into it. Dramatic differences in types of businesses, number one. Number two, at a previous hearing on changing the hours, I specifically mentioned to Mr. Bolduc about the safety conditions of the entrances, specifically if you go around the rotary from Sheikah Road, you go around the rotary as you're going to continue down the North Main Street, there is an entrance right at the crosswalk. I pointed that out to him about that traffic safety issue. He said, "I recognize that, and we'll work on fixing that." Six months later, has that been fixed? Has that been addressed? It has not. So, we're talking about good faith moving forward, and that's a specific safety issue, and if you know that crosswalk, that's where all the kids cross, at the rotary, right there. And there's a crossing guard every single morning, and I drive by there every single morning on the way to my work, and there's cars and trucks lined up along that sidewalk. So, there's very little safety taking place within that area and the traffic trying to get into there, and nothing's been addressed. So, he was aware of that situation six months ago, and there's nothing been taking care of it, so...
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I just want briefly...
Sorry, please.
I think with respect to the other restaurants, you're right. People that go to the bar at 2:00 in the morning are a lot louder than someone wants to get a lottery ticket or a gallon of milk. With respect to the traffic, this is what was approved previously, this is the same setup, the same design as everything. Mr. Bolduc, in speaking to you, said that ultimately, when we redesign, we propose to redesign the whole thing, we'd be more than happy to meet with anyone. The only two issues that were brought up previously by the building inspector and the police chief with respect to concerns is this site, we're parking in front in the striping that was done the next day. The second that was brought up, that was done the next day. So, it's here and indicate that Pride's not good faith interacting with the planning board, I take exception to.
Thank you. Motion to vote. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion from the board? I think we've all made our points clear. I'll entertain a motion to alter the special permit to extend the hours to 11:30 and adopt the conditions proposed by the applicant.
So, just for the purpose of presenting it to the board for a vote? I will make a motion to do so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's do this by roll call. John?
No.
Russ?
No.
You had missed, no. We do not alter the special permit. I think we've heard from the townspeople loud and clear that there are issues, and we understand the consequences for the town, but we have to listen to our constituents. So, thank you for coming in, appreciate it. And we do expect the Pride people to respect their current conditions, including the closing time of the store.
Absolutely. I'll go there right now.
And I would suggest that if anyone has issues that they think it's open late, contact Kevin Duquette, who is our zoning enforcement officer, and he will make it a point, at some point, to get over there late without it being announced and find out whether or not they're in fact, because he's the town official who makes that rule, okay? Thank you. Moving right along. Is the next one?
Case SD-201901, definitive subdivision planned for Jeffrey Lane Southwest by applicant for approval of two-lot subdivision on 3.44 plus or minus acre parcel at 216 Summers Road. Assessor's ID 40-25-31. Located residence A zoning district. Applicant Val Chev's Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders, Eddie River Road, South Catholic Mass.
Which of your comments, the departments regarding Jeffrey Lane? Which of your comments from the departments regarding Jeffrey Lane?
Let's wait till the applicant is ready to hear them.
They're better locked.
Tony, would these provided to the applicant?
They should have been, but sometimes...
It's not necessary.
We will make sure the applicant receives a copy, but you can probably read it into the record because they...
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Now, we're at the end. Read these in now?
Read this in now. I just wanted to make sure the engineer was ready to hear.
I'm ready.
Okay, yeah, these are comments from Tom Christensen, Deputy Superintendent of Department of Public Works to the planning board. The East Long Metal Department of Public Works offers the following comments on the above-received project. It is a recommendation of this office that waivers should not be granted for the following. 3D construction layout, site plan, 3E grading and drainage plan, 3F utility and grading plan, 3I detail sheets, nine stormwater management report. The town cannot accept the proposed street as designed and it is our recommendation that the applicant request a meeting with this office prior to resubmital. Please let me know if you have any questions. Yours respectfully, Tom Christensen.
Is the first you're hearing of that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't know how much we want to get into this, given the comments from DPW. I would suggest that it'd be best if we continue the hearing until you've had a chance to sit down with them and understand why the street is not acceptable to the town. Okay?
If you want, we can continue it. Do you want to continue it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's the easiest way to do it because rather than waste time going over something that...
Right. We went before the Conservation Commission and this was the, what we proposed was the only way that that street could go in and not go into the proper zones of the...
I understood. The, as you know, the town has very specific requirements on what streets need to be looked like. And the best way to do that is to sit down with DPW and discuss it with them. Okay. So, we have a motion to continue the public hearing. Well, since we're here, let's open it up. If someone's here from the public who wants to comment on this, I'd appreciate hearing those comments now, but we will continue this so that they can talk to DPW and hopefully redesign the street to make it acceptable. Does anyone wish to say anything about this at this time? Hearing none, I'll go for a motion to continue this to March 19th. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
That's what I...
This is all we got.
That's what I've got from DPW and it's the only comments I have.
Fire or police or anybody else?
No. Tony, no?
No, no other comments.
Okay. If we do get additional comments between now and the 19th, we'll make sure that you get copies of them.
Give them to Lorenzo, looking forward to me.
I have Val's contact number. Who am I? Who's Lorenzo?
Right there. Lorenzo Valshaves.
Oh.
Just send them to him, I'll get them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So, we're good for now?
Okay.
Case Site 2019-1, Secure Energy Inc. Request by applicant for site plan approval for the installation of a fence at 515 Shaker Road. Assessors Parcel 21-9-0 on a 2.68 plus or minus acre site located in industrial garden park district. Applicant is Kevin Mattson, Secure Energy Realty Inc., 515 Shaker Road, East Long Metal Mass.
Would it be easier to put the plans here or stand up here?
Better to put them on the easel so that everybody can see them. We have copies of the plan, so.
For the record, my name is Philippe Cravo of our Levex Associates, here representing Secure Energy. Kevin Mattson, the applicant. We are here before you for a site plan application for the installation of a fence on the property at 515 Shaker Road. If you're familiar with the property, this was a recently approved site plan, maybe two years ago. It was an old manufacturing facility, I believe, and it's been converted to an office space. There were some parking improvements that occurred along the rear of the facility. There's a loading dock that was removed and that was all part of the previous approval. What the applicant is looking to do now is install an eight-foot vinyl fence along the frontage of the property as shown here, along the property line here, and then closing off to an existing coverage structure there. I can flip the page so that we can get a little more detail of the specific area.
Can I ask the folks in the lobby to either move to the hallway or close the door? Thank you.
So, this is more of a sort of zoomed-in depiction of where the fence is being located. Now, we're, so, because of the zoning being an industrial garden, we had to file for a site plan for the fence. We are requesting a couple waivers, a few waivers, one being, a couple being as a matter of formality and I guess the most pertinent waiver would be of Section 3.302B, which would be the installation of a fence closer to the front lot line of the existing building. So, essentially, the zoning bylaw states that the fence can't be closer to the front lot line of the existing building. In this particular case, there's an existing condenser unit. I did bring some photos of the area for the board to review, just as a matter of reference. And all that is, is to, you know, they put a lot of money into making this building look really nice and then they have this existing condenser unit that's right out front in this front corner and they just want to incorporate that as a screen, use the fence as a screen for that unit.
Would you point to that on that plan?
That's...
Oh, okay, right there.
Rectangle you see here.
Okay.
Is that, if you flip that over, that's that unit that you see on the...
Your Shaker Road.
Yep. And one benefit is, you know, the fence, it's an eight-foot fence, but we're also down. If you see from the topography, Shaker Road's a little, is up higher than where this fence is going. So, it's not like you're going to be looking at a neutral fence from Shaker Road. It will be set down a little bit lower. So, that would be, that's the purpose for that particular waiver is just for the screening of that particular unit, which also falls more in line with Section 4, 7.41, which they tell you to screen those.
Yeah.
So, they kind of play hand in hand. And then, there was a couple other waivers. Those were, like I was saying, formality, like the traffic study. This has no impact as to vehicular traffic around the site. And then, 7.433, the alteration to existing facilities, this will not alter, increase or decrease the existing use of the building. It's just simply a fence around this southern area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the public on this one? If you go down Shaker Road, this is before you get to the, turn into the industrial park. It's right next to Abide, isn't it? Or up the hill?
It's, you pass the new, yeah, Denzold Road, it's off to the right.
Yeah, it's just past Abide.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing none, I bring back to the board. Any questions? Looks pretty straightforward. It's what, one of the things that makes me favorable to it is the fact that this, while it's an industrial garden park, it's not a part of the area where you have the other industries there, so that it's not a question of being consistent with the buildings around it, as we would expect if you were on, say, an industrial or something like that. So, do you have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we should vote on the waivers first. We have three waivers. The first one, which is mostly different, one is the being closer to the front lot line than to screen the mechanical unit along the front of the building. Do I have a motion to approve that waiver?
So moved.
Now, the second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the waiver of the traffic study?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And do I have a motion to approve the third waiver of alteration to existing facilities?
So moved.
Now, the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the alteration to the site plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good to go. Isn't it all that simple?
Yeah, I don't know. Me too.
Case SD-D definitives subdivision plan for Fairway Lane Estates. Request by applicant for approval of a 10-lot subdivision, 6.82 plus or minus acre parcel at 295-299 Maple Street. Assessors Parcel ID 6-11-0 and 6-10-0. Located Residence B, zoning district. Applicant is Michael Carabetta, 202 Allen Street, East Long Metal, Mass.
Do you have your comments?
Should I go ahead and read these in? Let me go ahead and read these in?
Yep, go ahead.
These are comments from Thomas Christensen, Deputy Superintendent of Department of Public Works to the planning board. East Long Metal Department of Public Works offers the following comments on the above referenced project. A note shall be added to the plan stating that all cast iron materials, including but not limited to manhole, frames, covers, water main valve boxes, covers, curb stop boxes and covers shall be North American made. Sewer lateral connections from lots 1 through 6 will use a Romac-style CB sewer saddle or approved equivalent. A detail should be added to the plan. The hydrant detail shall be revised to show filler fabric around the stone and the hydrant drain. A note should be added to the plan indicating that all water main construction shall include brass wedges and all ball and spudic...
Spigot.
Spigot joints. If vertical chimneys are used for sewer services connections, they shall be pre-cast sections. A note should be added to the plan stating that all brass fittings, corporations, curb stops, unions, et cetera, will be lead-free. Hydrants will be water purser five and a quarter or approved equivalent, painted yellow, counterclockwise open, clockwise closed. A note should be added to the plan stating that the main gate valves will be resilient wedge-type. Epoxy coated will be counterclockwise open, clockwise closed. All exposed bolts will be stainless steel type 3 or 4, minimum type 316 is preferred. Note 12 in Section C2 shall be revised to read all water mains, hydrant branches and services shall be metallic. Warning tape installed 12 to 18 inches above the pipe. Note should be added to the sewer notes as well. Driveway apron to the entrance at 299 Maple Street should be removed and full height curb shall be installed along the edge of existing edge of pavement on Maple Street. All catch basins shall be type C curb-type. All drainage pipes located under the pavement shall be at a minimum of 15-inch diameter and have a minimum of 24-inch of cover. Pre-plating shall be installed at 40-foot intervals as per subdivision regulations and be located outside the town right of way. The easement area for the overflow pipe shall be hatched and labeled. Additionally, the easement areas for the bio-retention area should be removed or access should be provided from the proposed cul-de-sac. Please note that on the plan and perhaps the deeds, lots 4 and 5, at the top of the slope, the infiltration basin shall be kept clean for a minimum of 10 feet on all appendices to allow emergency access to the town of East Long Metal. Double yellow line be installed at the intersection at Maple Street and distance of 50 feet along the proposed Fairway Lane. Prior to commencement of construction, the applicant will submit the illicit discharge compliance statement provided in expedite H for the stormwater report. Prior to commencement of construction, the applicant shall submit a complete town of East Long Metal stormwater management permit application for review. Let me know if you have anything else.
Good. Just to note that this letter is dated February 14th, so these items haven't been incorporated into the plans that we're looking at here tonight.
I'm just going to comment at this point. Obviously, we're going to need to continue this to get the plans, but I know there are a lot of people here tonight to hear about this. And since these are all basically details and don't really impact the overall layout of the subdivision, I'd suggest you go ahead and present your revised plan to us and we can take comments from the butters and then we can review it again on the 19th when hopefully we'll have the revised plans and everything else that he's asking for.
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely. So, I'll run through the project.
Yeah, if you could stand so that people can see this a little bit, you help.
Okay. Absolutely. Okay, so, for the record, Philippe Cravo of our Levex Associates, here tonight with the applicant, Mr. Michael Carabetta, for the proposed definitive subdivision off of Maple Street. We have been for the board in a preliminary subdivision manner. That plan was only utilizing the existing portion of the land. If you can see it here, it's this lighter dash line here. That's when we had the subdivision only fitting on that parcel. Since then, the adjacent parcel has been in discussion to be acquired in order to provide for what you see here tonight. That, one of the benefits of doing that, incorporating both parcels together, is that it allowed us to slide the road over towards the west more and it made, it extended the depth of the lots running along the eastern property line there. But just as a brief overview, there's an undulating topography on this site. It starts at about elevation 206 at Maple Street, rolls down to sort of a depression about halfway through the site. Rope kind of comes up to a high point and then back down towards the golf course along the northern property line. The proposed cul-de-sac is about 870 feet long to service 10 lots. There is one existing home located on Lot 10. That's part of that adjacent parcel that's being incorporated into this definitive application. So, that home will remain and be located on Lot 10. And then, all the other lines are sequentially numbered, beginning at Maple Street. As far as utilities go, water will be serviced off of Maple Street. There is an existing sanitary sewer that runs along the eastern property line, essentially the entire length of the eastern property line. Gases will be located, will be connected to Maple Street and also electric will be underground, electric dropped from the utility pole on Maple Street. The proposed drainage system is such that there are a series of catch basins located in the new roadway. So, the roadway will grade down to a low point located about here, about where that existing undulation in the topography is. And then, the cul-de-sac will be locate, will sort of kind of ramp up to where that high point is to match the existing topography a little better. During the preliminary, we were kind of forcing the road in there and saying one straight shot to the cul-de-sac with a basin along the northern property line. But we have since, with the acquisition of the adjacent land or pending acquisition, we were able to kind of fit the road onto the site better and create a surface infiltration basin about halfway down the road here, which kind of matches up with the basin for the adjacent neighborhood, lesser side circle. In addition, there are two bio-retention areas, also called rain gardens, along the northern property line. And that's essentially to sort of intercept any runoff before it makes it to the golf course to sort of kind of dissipate any flows coming off of the backyards of those lots and even that. That being said, that's the overview of the project. We're in a Residence B zone. All of the lots conform as far as frontage and area for that zone. There are a couple of waivers being... There are a couple of waivers being requested for this particular application. Listed in the waiver request form, subdivision rules, regulations, 6.2.5 street width. So in this zone, the subdivision rules state that the right-of-way to be 60 feet. What we have proposed here is a 50-foot right-of-way, and also along the same lot path is that the roadway in the zoning regulations, or the subdivision regulations would be 30 feet. We're currently proposing a 24-foot wide roadway. Couple benefits to that are it makes the lots a little more appealing. It gives them that extra 10 feet, as well as reduces the total impervious area of the site. It brings down a 30-foot wide road down to 24 feet, and it just reduces the overall impact as far as stormwater is concerned. Stormwater basin doesn't have to be as large to accommodate that additional 6 feet along the entire length of the roadway. Also, zoning by law 7.43, which is the traffic study, considering that Maple Street is a pretty heavily trafficked road, the addition of the 10 lots to the traffic on Maple Street wouldn't significantly impact the level of service of Maple Street. So that's the summary, that's the overview. Want to ask any questions?
First, we'll, being a public hearing, we'll open up to the public if anyone has any comments or questions they would like to ask at this point. We will be continuing this, so there'll be further time for comment at the next one to do the continuation.
Okay, I'm here now.
Sure.
David Delavecchio, 26, Lassard Circle, in the direct of butter of what looks like is going to be the next retention pond, which we already have one in our backyard, so we'll be sharing it, or it'll be walled off, I'm assuming, between the two. They're going to be pretty close together.
Yeah.
If we get heavy rains, I don't know how each one's going to handle the water coming through or from either one.
Well, that's why we're going to get a stormwater report from these people. That DPW will review to make sure that it can handle the stormwater that's coming from the site.
And my only other question was what type of housing is it going to be, is it all going to be? Will there be any subsidized housing, any Chapter 8 housing, any group housing, any type of that thing, which hasn't been asked as far as I know?
I would address that to the developer. I would comment that under state law, there are certain types of housing that are, if you will, exempt from group housing. You can't tell somebody they can't turn a house into a group house.
I understand.
I mean, it's not something to develop our plans, but if a social service agency comes in and buys a house, they have certain rights under state law.
Right, I understand. I just didn't know if there was any foregone conclusion yet.
Mr. Caravetta, would you care to address that?
Yeah, so the square footage is going to be roughly 2,000 to 2,500 square feet. Price point is going to be roughly $425 to $500,000.
Okay.
For those 10 houses.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, go to the board.
Yeah, the dark green?
Yes.
What is it? I'm more thinking to the bottom.
To the bottom?
Yeah, so what is?
That would be the remaining vegetated buffer along the eastern property line there.
So what type of buffer?
Existing mature vegetation. There's tall trees along there, as well as, you know, understory in that area.
Tell me more.
Pine, oak, scrub, yeah.
Okay. So 30 feet, 50 feet of existing?
Existing? Let me grab my scale, and I can tell you precisely.
And any plans to extend that, the entire length of the street on that side? So you're kind of creating a little buffer for the people who had a wooded view-
Correct.
And now wouldn't have a wooden view, so any-
Yeah, I've actually talked to a couple of neighbors about that, working with them to try to establish some kind of a buffer on the property line.
So this is-
And would that go into a deed?
Not at this point.
So this, I guess, larger pattern intersection here, that's about 40, just under 50 feet, 47 to 48 feet. Thinner area would be about 20-plus feet, 20 to 25 feet. That's what's represented here. That's 25 feet, that's about 50 feet. Obviously, a little thinner across the top here. This triangle here, that's where the stormwater basin is. That's where our proposed basin is. And just to address the overflow comment, is that this basin has been designed for the 100-year storm event. Any storm event greater than a 100-year storm would overflow by an outlet control structure off towards the west.
So you indicated one of the waivers that you're looking for is a traffic study waiver.
Yes.
So do you have preliminary numbers from, like Pioneer Valley Planning Commission? Something?
Not specifically Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but just from experience dealing with subdivisions, is that each lot gets assigned 10 vehicle trips per day, and so 10 lots would be about 100 vehicle trips per day.
And are you giving some thought to restricting egress going toward Long Meadow only? Or are you going to have cars crossing the lane to go toward the center of town?
I would anticipate that there not being any restrictions on the exit of the subdivision. Residents in town might go either direction.
John?
So we've got Lesser Circle, so the houses would basically be similarly architecturally, they wouldn't be dramatically different from the houses that are already surrounding the area?
No, maybe a whisker bigger, but-
But pretty much the same, okay.
Correct.
And the church, so you have Lesser Circle, and then does the church about it as well on that side? Okay.
Hi?
I don't have any questions right now.
My only question is the existing house on the west side.
Yes.
That lot includes all the land down to Maple Street, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we don't have any offhand land?
That was one of your answers, at the first meeting.
Yeah, okay, very good, very good. Can I have any additional questions at this time? I would suggest that we vote on, keep the, we'll continue the hearing, but at this point, we vote on the waivers so that they can design with confidence. So to have a motion to approve the waiver of the right-of-way from 60 feet to 50 feet.
Well, wait, 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 I have a question first before we do that. Regarding, I don't have any problem voting in the waiver and things like that, but before we do, do we need, because I know we have in the past gotten input regarding the width of the pavement area from 30 to 24 for public safety purposes? Do we need any comments from anybody, for an example?
Kenny?
We should, we don't have anything. Police, I spoke with the fire chief, excuse me, I spoke with the police chief today, and he said that you, the planning board is the board that has the say on the subdivisions. He didn't find anything for his police department. I could consider-
Okay, so there's no comments regarding the width, regarding, okay, fine, that was my question.
So before we close the hearing, so-
We're not going to close it, we're going to continue it.
Okay, so I do have issues. So we have a brand-new medical complex-
Sure.
100 yards down the road, maybe? Maybe 200 yards down the road?
Yeah.
So I know that's part of Long Meadow. So have you looked at what their traffic considerations are? How many people will draw from East Long Meadow into there? How many people are coming out? Because those people, I mean, who knows where they would, where they were going for their medical care now, but they're going to be funneled down to that intersection.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, because we actually, we did, we-
And that's why I'm looking for-
We designed that site, so we worked with Boston O'Neil that did all the roadway improvements down there, so there probably are some traffic numbers that we can kind of-
Yeah, because I really do have a, I have a legitimate concern that you have, you come out, you want to take a left, you're crossing traffic that has increased because of that draw at the corner of Dwight and Maple. And I'd like to know, maybe they did a study, and so-
That's what I'm referring to.
I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on that yet until we could see some numbers. And the other two, I'm fine with.
So, and we all, I agree with you to a certain-
As far as Mr. Never's was talking about, I know that intersection has been completely redrawn, redeveloped in anticipation of the high traffic volume that's going to be generated by that. I know this planning board, and I think Long Meadow planning board, we've back and forth on a number of different occasions about that, so, you know, this is probably not as large as that project, it's probably not going to generate as much, but that intersection has been completely revamped.
But it didn't come that far down to Fairway Drive?
It actually stops about 20 feet short, so it's pretty close.
They, I know that they accounted for all the traffic on Maple Street, and so I know that in order to change levels of service of a roadway, it has to be a pretty significant increase in traffic.
We all, I hear you, we all know what it's like for people trying to turn left out of Westwood right now. Even turning right out of that is a challenge sometimes, but it doesn't back up that much, and that gets a lot more traffic than this is ever going to see.
Westwood.
Westwood. Oh, yeah, yeah. But we'll delay on that one until we get more information. Do I have a motion to approve waiver number one, which is 16 to 50 feet?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve waiver number two, reducing the street pavement to 24 feet, realizing that we've done this in a number of other subdivisions and fire hasn't had any significant issues.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you got the two waivers, have a motion to continue the hearing to March 19th.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry.
I just wanted to mention one thing that-
Yeah, identify yourself again?
Yeah, my name is Sean McGrady. I'm in a butter from 29 Lassard Circle, which is this property right here, and I think that this is a bit of a misrepresentation of pine trees and whatnot. This is nothing more than ankle-high to knee-high brush right here. I spoke briefly with Mr. Caravetta about this and the intentions to have some sort of vegetation or buffer brought back, and I'm happy to continue those talks with him in good faith. I just wanted to point out that to say that there's 50 feet of trees and shrubs and whatnot there is a bit of a misrepresentation here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll look forward to getting the clear plans on the 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should open the door, please.
It's always quiet again?
No, there's still- I think it was all.
Okay. Next one. We have a bunch of site plan waivers.
Case SPRW 2019-03 Mercy Medical Group, request by applicant for site plan waiver for medical office tenant in 98 Acre Road, AKA 94 Acre Road, assessors parcel ID 28-7-B, within 16,000-square-foot office structure of 2.67-acre site located in business zoning district. Applicant Mercy Medical Group Inc., DBA Trinity Health of New England Medical Group, 98 Acre Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
So this is basically a change in owner-
If I may, we've been waiting for their payment of fee as well as some final documents.
So we don't have that yet?
We do not. They've been reminded several times. We do put them on the agenda to accommodate the business owner, however, we haven't received the complete survey. So may I suggest that you continue this to the March 19th?
Well, take no action now and put it back on the agenda for the 19th, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, we've been-
No, that's fine. It's, they're, have a major change in ownership, and I expect that they are administratively challenged at the moment.
Thank you.
The next one.
Case SPRW 2019-04 Automated Tax Service Inc., request by applicant for site plan waiver for an accounting and tax preparation business, 264 North Main Street, Unit 8, assessors parcel 14-11-7, located in the commercial zoning district. Applicant is Armond Acre, 264 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass.
This is an office in an office building. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one.
Case SPRW 2019-05 Mass Gun Shop Inc., DBA Pioneer Valley Arms, request by applicant for site plan waiver for retail business for the sale of firearms, ammunition, and accessories of 50-acre road, assessors parcel 27-169-0, on a .61-acre site located in business zoning district. Applicant is Kendall-
Napik.
Napik, thanks.
Hi, for the record-
26 Toga Streets, Springfield, Mass.
But before we get to that, do you want to read the comments from the police chief?
Comment from the police chief is, "Dear Planning Board members, in regards to site waiver requests for Pioneer Valley Arms, I have the following concerns due to the nature of the business as it pertains to public safety. Storage and security plan of such products and premise plan to include exterior of the building as well as interior. Plans on item number one should be submitted to the office of the Chief of Police."
I actually met and spoke with the Chief of Police. Him and I talked about security windows, those are already there. We will have a security system in place, like most businesses do, alarm system, obviously.
Drew yourself first, please.
Sorry.
Name and address.
For the record, Kendall Napik, address is 260 Toga Streets, Springfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I did meet with the Chief of Police. We did go over those things. He signed off on my application and seemed to be fine. I do want to submit eight letters from the police department in support of the business, from the officers who are there.
I'm sorry, when did you have? This was today, what time?
That was yesterday, but they should be dated yesterday.
Okay, so our email came today from the chief.
From the chief, okay. Him and I had met already.
But no, he, so the email that was just written to the record was provided to the department today.
Okay.
So apparently there were some loose ends that still need to be tied up.
Okay.
Any other you'd like to add at this point?
So I have the letters submitting. Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. There already is a federal firearms license dealer in town, so I certainly would not be the first one, so I'm not breaking the mold here. The previous use of the space was retail already, and that's what I would be doing is retail of sporting goods. I've been in the industry for over 10 years now, never any issues at any point.
Any comments from the board? I might, my comment would be, given that the police, Chief of Police is asking for a plan, and particularly including a plan of the exterior of the building, that I would think that we would need to require this to be a site plan review to meet his requirements, and I would defer to the Chief of Police on that. Because we're going to have to see plans, so we're going to have to review them, and that makes it a site plan. So what we're looking at here is a request for a waiver of that site plan, thinking view of the comments from the Chief of Police, that we should not waive the site plan and should ask for a site plan. I know it slows you up, unfortunately, but I think we have to respect the comments from our chief security officer, if you will.
Of course.
Okay? And what this will do, will give us a plan so that, I know you have the best of intentions, but we need to have something that people can refer to and say, yes, this is what they said they were going to do, and they did it.
Okay.
Okay? So do I have them, then? So can we just get some basics? Sure.
So, you're going to be full-on retail?
Yeah.
So it's not by appointment only?
Correct.
And what were your hours of operation intended to be?
Tuesday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and then Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.
Okay. And so I'm sure you know all this stuff, so how do you check people's licenses? I mean, what's-
So in order to even touch a firearm in Massachusetts, store policy is person must have a actual gun permit, but you need to have a clean background in order to get the gun permit. So you're not allowed to even touch any firearms unless you have a gun permit. Okay? That requires a safety class, so people go to a Massachusetts safety course, and they get certified, they go through, they take a test. Most of the classes all have live fire, and then they actually apply with the police department of the city that they live in. That police department will do their background check and everything, and then they will get their permit back in a few weeks, granted if their background is clear.
You say permit, you're talking about an FID?
So either a Class A LTC or an FID, which FID is under 21 and Class A LTC is over 21.
Over- Over age?
Yep.
Okay, I thought everybody needed an FID.
FID is just a gun permit for people who are under twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
So when you're over twenty-one, then you apply for the Class A, which allows you to purchase handguns and long guns. The FID card allows you to purchase low-capacity long guns.
Okay.
And, and the type of, you're gonna be doing handguns, rifles, what, or all the above?
Handguns, long guns.
Okay. So do I have a motion to deny the waiver and require a site plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, I think you've got support from police department, you've got support from a number of people in town, uh, but we need to have the site plan to keep the chief happy.
Okay, I wish that he reached out to me.
Well, unfortunately, we only got it today, so?
Okay, it didn't give me much.
Uh, hopefully we can deal with you on the nineteenth, okay, if you can have the site plan ready by then.
Okay.
And that will be a hearing, right, Connie?
Yes, I'll have to advertise.
We'll have to be out of time.
Phone number four-one-three-two-oh-four-seven-oh-three-nine?
Yes.
Or five-three-seven-four-six-six-one?
I have no idea what five-three-seven is, I'm guessing that's probably the landlords?
But the two-zero-four-seven-oh-three matches you, okay, okay, thank you.
Is this going in where the old martial arts store was?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for coming out and explaining to us, yeah?
Thank you.
We'll give you a call tomorrow from the office?
Okay.
And help you with your paperwork?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, one more?
Case SPRW two thousand nineteen dash oh-six, New Path Counseling LLC. Request by applicant for site plan waiver for professional office, offering counseling service at two sixty-four North Main Street, Unit Ten, Unit Ten, Assessors Parcel ID fourteen dash eleven dash ten, located in commercial zoning district. Applicant is Bayo Chow Van in Pung Du, fifty-two Senegal Place, East Long Meadow Mass.
Okay, so this again is a council office going toward an office building? If you could please, um, do your discussions in the hallway, so that we have a, more, we need to go through here. Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good to go. Okay, we have an A and R.
Uh, case A and R, two thousand nineteen dash oh-three, fifteen Glendale Road, request for endorsement of a plan for which approval is not required on a point-five-five plus or minus acre site located fifteen Glendale Road, Assessors Parcel ID sixteen dash ninety-eight dash forty-seven, in the residential C zoning district. Applicants eighty-eight Casino Terrace LLC, two ninety-six North Street, East Long Meadow Mass.
Good evening, I'm Rich Terror from, uh, Raveast Real Estate here in town, I work with, uh, the Casino Terrace, uh, group, and, uh, I live at thirty-five Earthspin Drive in Long Meadow Mass, and my office is here in town at the square.
I'm, uh, Dan O'Brien, that's Smith Associates, I'm the surveyor there with the plan.
Okay. The issue with this plan is that Fifth, that Gondel Road is not, uh, accepted street, I mean, Fifth Street is not accepted in that, that area. So you don't have frontage on a public way.
It is a private street that the town maintains. I guess our contention is that the town plows it, picks up rubbish, provides other services. There's a house directly across the street from the parcel, there's a house next door to the parcel, and the way seems to be sufficient to, uh, for those two parcels to utilize the road.
Do we have comments, um, from DPW on this hearing?
I, you know, I?
I thought we did.
I thought you had them also, and I also sent you comments. They would have been mailed out to you, so there are a couple of issues with this particular parcel is, yes, uh, they do plow, that, out of the goodness that the towns are, they've been plowing and delivering mail, and the school bus goes down the road. But we found, uh, that our roads are substandard conditions, these private ways, and there's no money in our coffers to upgrade these, these roads. So if you're going to be making a proposal before the planning board, it must meet the standards of construction that are acceptable to the Department of Public Works. So that's where we are today with such, which, with such plans. So maybe in the past, it was, it was a new construction and a new home that was, um, allowed under previous administration, but our board of select, excuse me, our town council, not our town's attorney, but our town council wants to know why they're getting complaints from residents. So unfortunately, what you have is an application on an unaccepted road that doesn't meet the standards of construction for today. So this would be a project that would be considered a subdivision, and not an approval not required under subdivision regulations.
I mean, I would concur with that, I'm looking to see if I can find the comments from DPW here. But, uh, generally, if it's not up to town standards, it's not considered a public way, and therefore require a subdivision plan that would bring the, the road up to standard.
You know, there's properties on the street already adjacent?
This is the oldest part of town, and there are properties that have been there since before we had zoning, okay?
Correct, this, this street existed before there was this subdivision control.
I, I understand that, but you're proposing to do something new, to create a new lot, okay? Which means that it has to have adequate access, um, there would be concerns with public safety issues, of getting fire trucks down a road like that, particularly in bad weather. So I, my, my opinion is that it requires a subdivision, um, and that, uh, it would require the road to be brought up to proper condition.
So on a thirty-three-foot-wide right-of-way, would you like to see a thirty-foot-wide pavement?
Could be twenty-four, okay? But it would have to meet DPW's standards.
Oh, here we go.
We have, we?
So I have comments, pardon me, from DP, from DPW. It is the recommendation of this office that any new building lot created on an unaccepted street be subject to the town of East Long Meadow rules and regulations with the development of paper streets. So there are standards under the development of paper streets, as well as subdivision?
I can't give you the copy, but we have?
And that's online, too, we posted that online.
But I look at your definition of paper streets in your paper street regulations, and it talks about a street that was never instructed, never built, it was shown on a subdivision plan, but never built on the ground. This, this street obviously was built, it might not be to a current standard, but it was built at one time to a standard which allowed for access to two building lots down there. It's pass, it's passable, um, if, if school buses currently get down there, I'm sure if?
School buses get down there?
That's, Connie just explained.
I, I would doubt that, because there's no way they're gonna turn around, and they don't back up.
Okay, perhaps school buses don't, I don't know. But if, if this guy, if Mr. Raybear across the street, if his house was on fire, I'm sure the fire department would be more than able to get down there and service him.
Sure.
So on February eleventh, I sent an email in response to the plan that you submitted electronically. Dan, I just took a quick look at the plan you proposed submitting under an A and R, I note that the frontage along Fifth Street is not a public way. Just a reminder that in order for a plan to be endorsed under an A and R, the way must be shown as a public way, or a way which the clerk of the city or town certifies is maintained and used as a public way, or a way shown on a plan previously approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law, or a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or town in which the land lies, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon. So I gave you a, a link to a PowerPoint that was craft, created by the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, discussing at greater length and detail in our plans. And then, um, I sent you the width of roads and local streets, and, um, I also sent you, uh, let's see.
Okay, so?
I think that was it, so you, you know, back?
It's up to the board to decide whether or not this is an acceptable street, okay? And in my opinion, it's, it's not, it should be done as a subdivision. But I'm, I'm looking to have other thoughts, Russ?
So I saw a picture of it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think it is a public way, it doesn't, to me, it wouldn't suffice as a public way, so.
Okay.
And, and you know, we had that issue with, uh, so this is over, I, I know exactly where it is. But we had the issue about when, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald was in to do the self-storage?
Yeah.
And all the neighbors are going, that's not a public way, Fifth Street, and all of that, they don't consider it a public way.
Yeah.
So?
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to endorse?
But I will add one thing, I mean, we just approved a twenty-four-foot width on, on, with Mr. Caravetta's, so?
Yeah, I understand, I understand that in the past, the, the town has approved, uh, narrow width ways.
Yeah, we just, you would ask for a waiver with you, your subdivision plan, okay? We, we, I mean, we?
There will not be a subdivision proposed for this road.
Okay, well?
So?
I would entertain a motion to endorse, actually to not endorse, because it's not a public way. So we're very specific about the reason for not endorsing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, which means that we are agreeing not to endorse, it say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We, we, we're being very careful about endorsing, uh, A and Rs that don't have proper access. We had one of them last time, uh, that, in fact, we had two of them at our last meeting, not meeting before that, I should say. One of which was, uh, I wanted to extend a street, a paper street, and the other one was where it was right on Summers Road, but you couldn't get there without crossing wetlands, and we needed plans showing how they're gonna cross the wetlands. So we're trying, you know, if, if it's a real A and R, we approve them, but if not, no.
I understand that it's, uh, the board's purview to decide whether it's, uh, suitable or not, uh, but, but there is massive amounts of case law, which would concur that this would be a, an acceptable means of access to this lot.
I appreciate your opinion on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the board? We dealt with the, uh, the, the right-of-way refusal at our last meeting, so that's done.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.